Good evening, it is January 23rd, 2014. We're at the Hyde Park School District's District Office. I'd like to open the meeting and call to order at 5:04. May I have a motion to enter Executive Session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to the employment, future employment of a particular person-to-persons and collective bargaining negotiations?
So moved.
Second.
And the ready discussion. All in favor? Thank you. We're now in Executive Session.
May I have a motion to leave Executive Session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? We're back in general session. We have the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let me just...I don't believe we have any agenda modifications for tonight. All right, at this time, we will...
You know, I would like to propose that we move the student presentation in front of the heating presentation so students can get home and do homework. The Avid...
All right, we have a suggestion that we move the students up because they're so eager to get up there in front of the camera. Oh, oh, that's right. Oh yeah, there's a camera. That's right.
Tell them that.
I think we can handle that. Everybody else is okay with that? All right.
I'll move the agenda so modified.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried. Thank you. So, we're at pride.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out a few things and then I'll ask some of the other board members to chime in as well. A couple of, maybe two months ago, we had our three master teachers that were identified by New York State here with us to be recognized. There were three out of nineteen, I was gonna say seventeen, three out of nineteen in all of New York State, we had three that were recognized as master teachers. And if you haven't received your copy of Hudson Valley News, Colleen Bucci, our science teacher who was for many years at Havilland, now at FDR, there's an incredibly well-written article featuring her as one of those nineteen master teachers. So, just wonderful to see. I'd like to thank the Hyde Park Historical Society for yet again, they sent us a nice picture, but they get together and hand knit, I guess there's no other way to do it. Well, they don't use looms, but they knit mittens and hats and scarves for our needy children to keep warm in the winter, and they're colorful and bright and fun, and they're distributed at our elementary school. So, I'd like to say thank you for, to the Hyde Park Historical Society for yet again contributing to our students and keeping them warm. We could do a little sports, I, it's so hard to keep track of what's not canceled with this weather, but I did have the opportunity to see some great basketball where we actually were one. I don't know if there's any updates on any of our other teams at this point.
Basketball doesn't play again until Friday, so you've seen the most current.
Okay. So, not a whole lot because most, many things have been canceled. And last night, we had a budget input group, but Doug, I know you went to the North Park.
Yes, I was gonna mention the North Park concert, as usual, was very, very good, was well-received, a lot of people there. It's why they have it at the high school, 'cause it was quite a crowd. Especially myself personally liked the band, I thought it was very well-done. And the North Park Notes, which is a select singing group, although everybody was good, but those two were especially good, I thought. Kudos to Mr. Knox and Mrs. Vanderly, I got it right. So, any other pride? Anybody else? Okay, well, let's move on, and since we moved Avid up front, you're up.
I think we have a superintendent's report first. It's way at the bottom, right?
I thought you wanted to move, I thought you were moving, but go ahead.
Oh, did we move it all the way up?
That's what I thought.
Oh, that's fine. That's fine, my, that's fine. Yeah, mine's only a five-second thing.
So, Aviva Kafka, if you would like to bring your Avid group and presentation forward.
And could I just say...
And Brian, who's here, one of the Avid teachers.
I'd like to say, just personally to the students, just be calm, it's not the end of the world, take your time, do the best job you can, and we'll be listening attentively, all right?
Thank you. As District Director for Avid, I'm really proud that in our first year, our students have taken the initiative and done the work to do this presentation all by themselves. I want to introduce Brian Howling, our Avid elective teacher, who will present the students.
So, the students elected that I would do the introduction, so I'm just gonna call them over here now, just so that they're ready for when I'm done. So, come on up, guys. I am the Avid elective teacher. It is an elective class that these students have elected to take. It's very important to note. I do want to thank the board briefly for the opportunity to teach this class because I've learned a lot from these young guys and girls, and they put a lot of time and effort into the presentation, and I'm excited to have them run through that for you. So, without further ado, here they are, your Avid team.
My name is Alex, I'm one of Avid's students, and I'm gonna be talking about Avid today.
I'm sorry, Alex, but if it's gonna... Either move the mic, or if you want to move the mic over or stand over here, thank you.
My name is Alex, I'm an Avid student, and today I'll be talking about Avid. Avid helps us students. What is Avid? Avid stands for Advanced via Individual Determination. Avid is a college readiness system for elementary through higher education that is designed to increase school-wide learning and performance. The Avid College Readiness System accelerates students' learning, uses research-based methods of effective instruction, and provides meaningful and motivational professional learning.
Hi, I'm Alex, and I'm here to tell you what Avid is not. Avid is not a program designed to help struggling students. This program helps a typical student go above and beyond to achieve more.
Avid's establishment, it began in 1980. It is created by Mary Catherine Swanson. It is in more than 4,800 sites. Overall, 1,050 of those are in the Eastern Division of the United States. Ninety percent of students who go through the Avid class, ninety percent of them apply to a college, and roughly seventy-six percent got accepted. That means that with the help of Avid, the program, more students apply and successfully got accepted by colleges to attend them. That is a picture of Mary Catherine Swanson, the creator of Avid. And on the board, there are some colleges that us students, or even other students in the school, would like to attend someday.
Hello, I'm Naomi, I'm here to tell you why Avid was created, and why do you guys think it was created? Reasons why Avid was created from our point of view. Help students get into college, improve our grades, to give students hope, improve students' abilities, encourage kids to go to college, and help students excel so they can succeed in life. Quotes from actual Avid students, December 2013, Superstars. This student from Grand Prairie High School said, "Avid has impacted me by providing support that I, that I never had at home. Now I have all the support that I need." This next student said, "Avid has impacted my life by keeping me organized and helping me learn key concepts during Avid tutorials. Tutorials allow me to master the things that I didn't understand in class." November 2013, Superstars. This student had said, "My Avid class is like a family. We trust each other, learn from each other, and help each other up when we are down. Through Avid, I believe that I can get to college and graduate from a four-year university. With the help of my Avid teacher and my peers, my dream will be made a reality." And last but not least, a student had said, "Avid has helped me be more humble, encouraged me to work as a volunteer, and has taught me specifics about college. I have found a career path for my future." And this chart shows how students have improved by being in Avid. And, one, two, three, four, five, the fifth one up and then the two under it show how a hundred percent of those students that go to those schools have applied and have been accepted. All of the ones that are in Avid were accepted to it.
Hi, my name is Hope Dyer, and I'm going to tell you what a tutorial means. To us, a tutorial is when we meet twice a week, sometimes even three times a week, and we work together to help with problems that we have in certain classes. A tutorial is a period of instructions given by a university or college tutor to an individual or very small group. Collaborative Avid tutorials have three key players, student, tutor, and teachers. Each plays an essential role in the Avid tutorial and overall effectiveness of the Avid elective class. The tutorial is based around using the submitted pieces, piece of work, as a springboard for discussions and development of ideas. Benefits of tutorials. This is a quote from a tutor by James Blair, from a tutor from James Blair Middle School, and he says, "As an Avid tutor, I have heard the students comment on the benefits of tutorials. They have expressed that they learn more through their discussions with other students. As the years have progressed, their questions reflect higher-level thinking. They use their higher-level thinking question, higher-level questions to enhance the discussions during the tutorial session." Other benefits. This is from one of our own students, her name is Courtney. She said, "I must say, I do turn in more homework than I used to because of tutorials. I also, I also somewhat try to get it done at home to avoid actually presenting and stuff, but that's not really important, so in the long run, I don't know, Ann, I guess it's helping." It also improves students' grades. Why it's important? This elective, this, it's essential that this, that elective teachers work collaboratively with students, contact, content class teachers, and family, families to monitor students' progress and provide support by having Avid students focus on their areas of need during the tutorial. It helps students with any subjects that they, they're having trouble with. How a tutorial is set up. Students are divided into five or six group, five or six, oh, sorry. Students are divided into groups of five or six students and one tutor. One student begins the tutorial by presenting a point of confusion. The tutor and student members ask questions to guide the student all through the inquiry Rules in the tutorial. Student members should be positive, encouraging, and supportive of their classmates. If you have a point of confusion, you should arrive to class with a tutorial request form. Students and tutors should ask good questions to help the student that is having a problem
Hi, my name's Isri, and I'm here to talk about how Avid has helped us. Quizzes and tests. Avid helped us improve our quiz and test grades. We reflect on our past quizzes and get the help we need to do better on the next quiz. We use the class time to get help from our fellow classmates so we get a better understanding of our work and tests. Tutorials. Tutorials allow us to master the things we didn't understand in class. It makes us think more and not just get answers. By asking questions, it allows us to fully understand how to do the work, so the class doesn't just feel like a study hall. And we get the chance to learn different materials because everyone has a different TRF. And in this picture, it's one of the extra days of tutorial where we actually don't tutor, and the, our classmates work with each other to figure out the things that we need help in. And we also get an understanding of college, so Avid has helped us to get a better understanding of college. It teaches us about the amount of responsibility and maturity necessary to succeed in college, and we get to research our college so we know what we need to do in school to get into our dream college. It helps us meet the requirements, and we also get to explore the different options that we have, so we see where we really want to go and what to do with our college future. And overall, in conclusion, Avid has helped us in many ways, not just in our grades, but it has and is still building us to be leaders. We learn from each other and help each other to overcome obstacles in classes we don't fully understand. It's a place where we get extra support and feel comfortable.
Hi, I'm Christopher. What are our goals? Some of our goals in Avid are to get good grades on our quizzes, tests, homework, projects, anything we can get a grade on, basically. Another one of our goals is to graduate high school, go to colleges that we like, and get good jobs, and overall excel, and be successful in school and life. These are some of the colleges that some of my peers wanted to go to, like MIT, ITT Tech, Notre Dame, Duke, and Full Sail. How has Avid helped us to achieve our goals? Before, with Avid, we get better grades. It gave us new skills for studying, like the Cornell notes, they make it a lot easier to go back and review everything for a test, quiz, and it helps us with our schoolwork.
I'm gonna do the quick conclusion. Sorry. Just really quick, I know they spoke and kind of hit on everything, I just wanted to touch base with some real facts, 'cause I'm a math guy. We don't have much to go on as far as how effective Avid's been, but these guys are kind of blazing the way, and they're kind of learning as we go, and we're just really proud of what they've done, specifically with their grades. One of the most documented, most difficult times of their career academically, the transition from middle school to high school, their grades have actually risen, and they're taking harder courses. So, that's just a piece of information I wanted to share with you. It's only a percentage point, so I don't know that you can put a lot into it, but I think it's a really big deal, and they're gonna grow and continue in the future, we have a lot of faith in them, so appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to the students. Wonderful job. Good done. Well done.
Yeah, thank you very much. Excellent job.
I'm sorry, Mr. Heater, I should add that Judy Barbera is here, and she's a staff developer from Avid who spent a day visiting and giving us some recommendations, so I just wanted to introduce Judy and thank her for being here tonight.
It was wonderful to be in their classroom, I'm just gonna be a little tech girl, and when I saw that they were presenting tonight, I knew that an hour and a half away. And when I looked at their presentation, I said, "Oh goodness, they've already got the basics." I would just encourage you to keep working really hard, and come back and present to the board maybe in another year or two, so they can see whether or not you've really internalized all that we've said.
Thank you. And as we, our goal in moving up the presentation was so you guys could get out of here, you're welcome to leave at any time you want now.
Thank you. Great job.
(applause)
Please be, Judy.
Okay, now I guess we'll do the superintendent's report.
Yeah, I just have one brief report, and that is to announce that the Mid-Hudson Athletic League entered into a partnership for office services with the Orange County Interscholastic Athlet, uh, Orange County Interscholastic Athletic Association. Both these organizations have been in existence for quite a while. They each have very unique functions and cultural and traditional experiences. There was quite a bit of dialogue back and forth, and some fear that Mahal would go away. That is absolutely not the case. The only thing we have done is joined forces, the Mahal and the OCIAA have now formed a partnership for clerical services, and it's a win-win for us. It was unanimously voted on by all Dutchess County superintendents, so the end result would be for a very minimal cost, we now have access and the, actually, the services of a highly skilled clerical staff for organizing and maintaining all of our athletic schedules. So, very good move forward. Some of the concerns about either Mahal going away, or Dutchess County superintendent's influence in this new organization, they structured it and wrote new bylaws so that Dutchess County definitely has representatives on the OCIAA board, and of course, you know, we're very involved in Mahal. So, that's, it's really just an announcement to, to, for this new structure and this merger.
All right, and we move on to heating updates?
Yeah, so I'm gonna ask Elliot and Wayne to talk about the updates, and I just wanted to read a letter that will be backpacked home tomorrow. It's on our website, it's on Facebook, and website, Facebook, email to staff. No secret, we've had some heating issues. I think everybody in the county has experienced them. We've certainly experienced a higher level of issues at Havilland Middle School. So, while they're getting ready and getting to the podium, I wrote, "Dear Hyde Park families, I'm writing to provide you an update on our heating issues. Due to extreme weather conditions combined with a systemic malfunction at Havilland Middle School, isolated heating problems at FDR High School, and two classroom heating repairs at North Park Elementary, we have experienced cold temperatures and the need to relocate students to alternative rooms within their buildings. Both North Park Elementary rooms have been fixed and temperatures are back to normal. The students who were relocated for one day have now returned to their original rooms. At Havilland Middle School, we have redesigned the classroom schedule and closed most of the rooms in the A Wing until we have a permanent solution to the heating system for that section of the building. Mr. Shaw and his team have a schedule in place that will take effect tomorrow morning. The teachers will meet all students in their assigned classrooms, and where applicable, will then travel to a new location in the building. While there may be some confusion and an interruption in classroom routines, this alternative ensures that students will continue to receive instruction. The teachers and staff at Havilland are focused on making the best situation for the safety and well-being of our students. It is our goal to have a plan in place, including a timeline for completion, fixing this systemic heating failure in the A Wing in the very near future. As soon as we have specific and detailed information, we will share it publicly utilizing the postal system, the website, Facebook, and email. All decisions regarding the system repairs will be made in public at Board of Education meetings, including holding an additional meeting if needed." And I think, Deb, we're gonna let you know we're having one next Wednesday at five.
Five.
And we'll do all the necessary and legal announcements. Over the last few weeks, we have also experienced some isolated issues at FDR High School. Approximately eight classrooms have experienced heating problems. Once the problems are identified and reported, our facilities team is deployed to make the necessary repairs. In response to all of the above heating challenges, we have engineers in our construction management firm onsite working in conjunction with our Department of Facilities and Operations to coordinate efforts to address both long- and short-term solutions. Taken altogether, the extreme weather conditions and aging infrastructure, the toll on our students' programs and schedules has negatively affected our normal operations. We continue to remedy isolated repairs in a timely manner and are utilizing all our resources to address the larger systemic issues. The education, health, and safety of our students and staff are our highest priority. Although this has been a very challenging time for our schools, we will do all that we can to keep the educational programs up and running. With that said, in any type of severe weather conditions such as this, you know, obviously all the buildings are a couple degrees colder, our houses are colder, our buildings are colder, but both the systemic and the isolated issues we are dealing with head-on.
Good evening. We've made quite a bit of headway since our last board meeting, excuse me, since last we met, I was able to compile the information we had available at the time into an action plan which was submitted to the administration and the board, basically outlining our plan of action going forward. And that plan was predicated on input from multiple sources, professionals in the industry, including two architectural firms and the capital contractor that did the majority of the work thus far in the building. So, we wanted to address this from multiple angles. We asked the mechanical firm, who specializes in heating systems and pipes and coils and things like that, to come in and kind of give us an assessment of, you know, where their work left off and where work still remains to be done in order to remediate the concerns at hand. And they gave us their perspective as well as a comprehensive test results, a matrix showing temperature changes observed and referencing what they should be versus what they, what they were in the test. We also had our engineering firm, the architects that designed the capital work thus far, to send us a specialist, a professional engineer, to walk the site and assess where we, you know, still have challenges and what the best courses of action are, both short-term and long-term, to get them fixed. In addition, we brought in a third-party engineering firm just to get an outsider's perspective. You know, everybody that we've been talking to has kind of been very close to the problem thus far, and we wanted to get that third-party unfamiliar with the territory to give us their outsider's look at what they think should be a their outsider's look at what they think should be addressed and how we should go about fixing the problem. Within the last week, I've received written reports from all three of these vendors, the latest of which came in this morning. And at this time, we're, we're ready to start dialoguing about what our next steps need to be in terms of exactly what needs to be done immediately and what we need to consider going forward to keep things like this from happening again in the near future. So I do have those reports on hand. I will be distributing them to the board members for review and dialoguing with some of you about our next steps. We're prepared to purchase some materials, things that are common to all three reports, things that we feel we can get addressed immediately. We've continued to do maintenance work in the interim and have been able to turn some of the colder spaces back over to Mr. Shaw and his staff to get the students back into some of these portions of the A Wing. As of this morning, we had 12 usable rooms reported as of 6:00 a.m. We're hopeful that that will continue in those spaces out of the 28 available spaces, I believe that is, Eric. Is that right roughly? So in addition to those 12 rooms, we got the A gym back up to temperature. It was over 72 degrees at 6 o'clock this morning. The locker room was at 66 degrees. So that, the unit that services those areas, those two units were repaired. We also have, since we've gone through this process, gotten the cafeteria units up and running and the cafeterias are nice and warm, as well as one of the units that services that first cluster of classrooms in the corridor there. So we still have more units to take care of. We're hopeful that if we purchase some of the materials in advance, we can have a contractor come in and work quickly to affect all of the repairs needed as soon as possible. It's something that we can get done a lot faster by bringing in outside help and we're prepared to do that.
Okay. Is there any questions from the board? Thank you. Then we'll move on.
So timeline, the detailed specifics about the scope of the work, the timeline for getting the work done, and the cost were, that we will be sharing. We're hoping to have all of that together to share at next Wednesday evening's board meeting.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I had the opportunity to stop by Haviland this afternoon.
Yes, around 2:00 or so. And I wanted to thank Mr. Shaw for a pretty extensive tour of the building. He took me to all the, I was going to say the hotspots, but yeah, that would be the wrong word. But just to, you know, there's clearly a lot that needs to be done. You know, I don't want to, you know, clearly there's a couple of things that we need to address and address them quickly and really should have been on top of this, you know, we, as a district, should have been attacking this a lot earlier. But, you know, just to be clear, because I was all over that building, including the boiler room, you know, everyone knows we have put new boilers in all these buildings. There's no issue, you know, I have enough knowledge of what I'm looking at down there, you know, with what was installed in the boiler room, you know, that's perfectly fine. That equipment was running, two of them were actually online firing when I got downstairs. The third one was, was not, was on standby, you know, 10 pounds of steam on the system, it was doing its thing, you know, so, and clearly you could tell that there was really good workmanship in the installation. You know, but the, as we had talked about in the previous board meeting and ad nauseam about the distribution system in the A section and, you know, there's clearly some things that were probably missed when we ran the new hot water supply and return lines, because as we had discussed earlier, we take the steam in C-section and while that is used to heat C-section, it also is used to heat hot water that is actually the supply of heat to the A section. And, you know, when we replaced the piping between the two buildings, there's probably some things we should have addressed as far as making sure we had good flow through the entire system. Having said that, after walking the system around today and looking at it, it's, it's an atrocious distribution system in that building, you know, and so lest anybody, you know, it's been neglected for not just this year, but for many years in the past. And again, I'm not making excuses for it, but this is what happens when you don't stay on top of maintenance and, you know, let things go and then, you know, you fix one piece of it and think, okay, this will solve all our problems and only actually figure out that you're actually creating more problems. You know, that, you know, when Elliot mentioned that the heating unit in the gym today, the one that was, you know, it was very comfortable in the A gym today when I went in there, you know, one, there's two air handlers in there, one was not in service for 10 years because it's been cannibalized for parts. So this is just the kind of stuff that's been going on year after year after year and it predates, you know, many of the people that are here on staff, but there's certainly a lot of catching up to do, not to mention a very, I think, very poor design of that building, you know, and I've said it once, I'll say it again, if you've walked around the A section of Haviland, it's, it's one of the cheapest, cheapest constructed buildings I've ever been in. It is, it's really, it's just poorly constructed, so it's not without its struggles. And so we really, you know, I know a number of members of the board, not a number, just three, in fact, are meeting very early tomorrow morning to walk through the system, those that actually have some expertise and, you know, they're going to put their heads together along with, you know, the staff and some of the project folks to come up with, you know, a good plan that I hope we'll hear about next Wednesday. So just my view, but, you know, just one, one compliment to, to Mr. Shaw. It's evident that, you know, in his first year at Haviland, he's had his hands full and he's done a really nice job. I can tell he is right on top of it and, you know, I know that, you know, in speaking and seeing a lot of the faculty today, they seem, they're comfortable with what is being done, while it's not ideal and we wish it didn't have to be done at all, that it's well in hand. So thank you for your leadership over there. It's made this a lot easier than it probably should be.
Okay, does anybody else have a comment, question? Gary?
Yeah, Elliot, those reports and recommendations are going to be available by Monday for the board?
The recommendations, the recommendations that we've received, they're in your email box currently.
They are.
And I will have, I'll have a full set of drawings of the pipe work that was installed at tomorrow's meeting.
Okay.
I don't have them digitally, but I'm working on getting that as well for distribution.
It is? Okay.
Okay, I just checked you out. It is in my email.
Yes, sir. Two minutes ago. I was looking at it.
Okay. Any other questions? Let me--
Actually, a minor one. How lengthy are those reports?
They're rather brief. I can just give you a quick bird's eye.
Actually, what I was thinking of, is it possible that before we leave tonight, we could have hard copies?
Um, I don't see why not. I can print them up for you.
Yeah, it'd be helpful to me if I could have a hard, if I walked out with a hard copy tonight, I'd be more prepared for tomorrow morning.
How many want hard copies? Three?
I'll get three sets of all three. I can print them for you.
The walk-around guys.
The walk-around guys. All right.
Okay, thanks. Yep, not a problem.
Any other comments or requests? Thank you, Elliot.
Okay, thank you.
Now we'll move to 6.5, Veterans Tax Credit. And you should have all received a document on that. I'd like to say upfront that, well, first of all, it's a discussion on tax law 458A, which is an amendment to the tax law for veterans, granting veterans some exclusions on their taxes. So I want to say upfront, I am a disabled veteran, so you can take whatever I, my opinion is on this with a grain of salt. I happen to be for it, not just because I'm a disabled veteran, because I think it's a good thing for veterans in general and I think they deserve it. So with that, this is a discussion and not a vote, so I'd like to have anybody want to have a, any comments you've had when you've looked at the, at the, that the material that Wayne has given us?
Quite a bit prepared to educate a little bit about--
You want, I wasn't, I wasn't sure if you were--
Yeah, I'm totally prepared to just get the conversation started with some basic facts and what, what's to come, that kind of thing.
All right, Wayne, that'll be good.
So as Doug mentioned, there was a change in the law, 458 and 458A, which provided for exemptions for veterans, not only at the municipal level, town level, but now in the school district level. So with that said, there's a pretty stringent deadline in order to get this on our tax roll for 2014, 15, and that is March 1st. And what the board has to do by that time is having, admit a decision about exemptions, which I'll go through very briefly and in more detail, you know, as we get, develop into the process, and then have a hearing with regards to this, so people have a chance to voice their opinions on it and a resolution in place. So we, you know, if, depending on how tonight's conversation go, we would, you know, have a more formal presentation next board meeting with some more facts and a PowerPoint presentation and then followed up by the, the hearing and the second meeting in February. So with that said, there's three exemptions and what, what has to be decided by the board is the level of exemption support that there is. And that goes anywhere from a exemption, and I'll tell you the three categories. There's a category for anybody that served in a war and the, there's a 15% limit, basically you can get 15% of your assessed value reduced for that, and in a combat zone adds 10%. And the disability, if you have a disability credit, that's an additional 50% of that credit. And there's different varying levels from 6,000 at the wartime, combat zone is 4,000, and disability being 20,000, all the way up to high appreciation counties where there's a lot of support for this, for 54,000, 36,000, and $180,000 for those three categories. State law basic maximum is 12,000 for wartime, combat zone is 8,000 and disability is 40,000. Without getting into too much detail, that's the kind of thing that we need to look at and make, you know, an informed decision on.
But the, these are individual thing. Well, there's a basic and then the other ones are add-ons, aren't they? So it's not, it's not, are we discussing whether we take the basic as opposed to the disabled, as opposed to wartime, whatever, whatever the third one was?
We could choose to do nothing at all.
Right.
We could choose to go at the, at the most minimum, you know, we could go at the state maximum, or we go all the way up to, you know, to a large amount. So it's really just a basis of looking at what the exemptions that we want to accept. I think part of my presentation, which I'm working on right now, would be to show the board what effect that might have on the other taxpayers in the community. There's also some additional benefits that you can choose, like the Gold Star Parents, where you can allow for parents of veterans who had a son or daughter pass away in the services, the same benefit that the veteran would have. I did go so far as to work with the county and the different assessors in our towns to find out what their exemptions are, so I have an idea, actually I know exactly what they are, and they vary from full to, you know, to a more minimum in our five towns. The number of vets has been found out, so with that, a spreadsheet's been developed that is, hopefully, once I finish my work, will show, based on the number of veterans that we have in our communities, the five towns, what that will do to, to the other taxpayers, because there's no funding stream for this per se. So what happens is the exemption will come, it will remove those assessed values and that will be shifted on to the taxpayers, you know, that are not veterans certainly. And as we've learned very closely with regards to the appropriation of where the percentage of tax levy lies, a small shift in one of our larger towns can equal quite a significant change in the other towns. So there's a, there's a chance that those kind of things should happen and I think that--
Well, presumably it would come off the top and then the, it would be distributed equally for the rest of the town.
Yep.
It wouldn't be like taken away and one town would see a bigger rise than anybody else that--
Well, the apportionments could shift. When you're taking--
Yeah, okay, the, the amount, the, the percentage of the, of the tax levy, okay.
And then also, it's important that, you know, that could also be pushed on to some groups that have, you know, historically had some difficulties, you know, with taxes, you know, that was, you know, pointed out as well and important to, to add to our conversation.
Well, yeah, it, we'll see how this goes, but I, anybody who's served in a war deserves a break.
It's important to note that this is just information and it's, you know, it's for the board to talk about a little bit and give direction on which way we'd like to move from here.
Wayne, on point four, you say that the veteran's exemption has been offered by the county and therefore if we decide to extend it, since the county and school tax rolls are on the same assessment, there would be no action. But if a veteran, did a veteran have to apply for that exemption at the county level?
If, if for some reason they were in a place where the county and/or town or combination did not, they would have to actually apply.
For, at the school level?
Right.
But suppose a veteran didn't, did not understand or did not apply for the, what he was entitled to at the county level, he would now have to apply to get the county and the school exemption.
I think once you do, I think it's going to be one--
Once you do it, you're going to get both, yeah. Okay.
Any other comments?
Just to make sure I heard right, so Wayne, you're working on some type of a spreadsheet that will show us what the cost is, because you, you know from the county how many people are eligible in each of our participating towns, and you'll be able to calculate what the value is, and basically that, that tax burden is going to be shifted to the remaining taxpayers in the area, so we could, you could, we could, you know, we have a theoretical average household and be able to say, okay, then that taxpayer is going to have X amount of dollars of additional--
The first part, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
I can come up with the maximum potential tax impact, but as, I would be hesitant to go, you know, as an average household, because I don't know how accurate that would be. It would all depend a lot on your personal tax situation, just like when, you know, we're doing the tax levy in September. It's a very difficult thing to put, you know, what I can say is, you know, for example, if we went with the, this is just an example, state law basic maximum, which is 12,000 for wartime, as I mentioned, an additional 8,000 or 20,000 combined for combat zone, and then an additional 30 for disability, that a house in, let's say Clinton, or not, not a house in Clinton, the entire Clinton area would see $32,000 off of their tax roll. So it would be something like that.
Okay, so that 32,000 would have to be made up by--
Right.
Some--
32,000 of the value or--
The tax, the tax. Of tax, 30, of tax revenue.
The tax on the 32,000.
Yeah, tax revenue of 32,000. Okay. Do you have a number for Hyde Park? Obviously you've done some--
It's very preliminary. I mean--
Okay.
I could. For the state minimum for Hyde Park was 400,000, so Hyde Parks are much larger.
Okay.
I'm confused then, because all of a sudden I hear this word, the tax reduction, but I'm looking at the chart here. It says the maximum you can get for a basic exemption is up to 15% of the assessed value.
That's correct.
Not the real dollar payments you're making.
The, the chart converts it.
All right, and then once you, once you do that, we still have that other step that messes us up every year, because you then have to apply the equalization rate, right?
Mm-hmm.
To that, to that figure before you come up with a real, real property value exemption. And then we distribute the bill or what we've approved as a tax levy, then gets apportioned according to the remaining real property, real property value for the, for the town.
Yep.
So it's, it's, it's going to work the same way as the, the equalization rate's going to hit it in the same way that we see every year and can't project exactly what's going on.
The equalization rate is built into the spreadsheet, so it takes these, like, it takes the scenarios, you know, the minimum support to the maximum support--
Okay.
And takes each of those, gives a total, multiplies it by the number of people in that town that the county has given me.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so for example, there's 45 wartime people in XYZ town, and then I take it, multiply it, you know, by its equalization rate, which gives me the total assessed value, which in that, you know, which in the case of this one is 100%, so the same thing, and then it multiplies it by the tax rate.
Okay.
And that's what gives you the number--
That gives you the broad-based number of how much, how much money has to be reapportioned.
That's correct.
Okay.
And when will you be giving us this?
Well, I was hoping to, to understand, you know, what the board's thoughts are on this and, you know, if we want to move forward with, you know, further information, you know, moving into a, you know, a formal presentation where these numbers would be up on the screen and, you know, eventually we just need to make a choice that we want to move ahead with the hearing and, you know, reaching that March 1st deadline.
I'd like to hear from everybody's--
Well, you know, I just, you know, we heard a little bit of this last night, because I stopped at the big meeting and, you know, I'd like to see, I'd like to see, I would like to see numbers and impacts, because while I think it's a-- to see, um, um, I, I would like to see numbers and impacts, because while I think it's a marvelous idea, I think anything you can do for veterans of war is a great idea. I think that, you know, the hard reality is that you are essentially transferring a tax burden from, you know, one class of folks to another. If it were as simple as we're going to cut expenses to make this happen, that's an easy decision. Or on the other hand, if we're going to transfer a tax burden from, you know, a disabled or, or even just a veteran of war to other citizens who are not, um, me for example, if it's $5, $10, $20 on my tax bill, hey, have at, great idea. If it's $500 on my tax bill, whoa, whoa, I, we got to talk about that, you know? So I really need to understand what the impact is, because you have to, you know, and, and it's very tricky, because it's, this is one of those things where this is, this is, it's, it was, it, it seemed like a good idea when our, you know, our folks and friends in Albany probably came up with this and, and they've done it in the town. And we talked a little bit last night about the town of Poughkeepsie went full bore and it's a substantial, you know, hit. And, uh, the, um, the fact of the matter is, it's all well and good for this, this little governing body of seven to make the decision that impacts everybody else. I mean, we all make a lot of decisions that impact everybody else, but, you know, it's almost a, it's almost a no-win situation, because it's, I'm going to do a very nice thing for veterans, oh, but it's going to be at your expense, you know? So we, I want to, I really want to have a lot of information before-
I would be very careful about saying that. People who served in a war, I did not serve, I was served during wartime, but not in a war.
Right.
They earned that. You, they, they gave their livelihood up, they gave a lot of stuff up for you and for me.
No, Doug, I under, I understand that philosophically, but-
Be very careful when you say, I don't know if it's worth it, because they earned it.
No, I don't, they earned, they earned everything they've gotten and I just, but I think people have to understand the reality, that you're, you're effectively transferring a, a burden to other people. It's not just a matter of, here's the exemption and the problem's gone. And, and if, you can't go into this blindly, you know? You are, and rightfully so, the first one to be very, you know, when, when we have to deal with, you know, contract negotiations and other expenditures, hey, this is going to be a burden, because yes, it affects everybody. So this cannot be ignored any differently than all the other things we have to deal with. I totally agree. Boy, you know, if I was the king and had all the money in the world, I absolutely would today tell you, go for the full exemption. But I think that would be not a practical thing to do without having the others.
Well, that's why we're going to have the discussion. I just wanted to point out-
Right.
-that, you know, they already took on a burden. A veteran took on a burden for you. I don't know if you served in, in any service. They took on a burden for you.
But I didn't do nearly what those folks have certainly have done, and certainly combat veterans, yeah, but, you know, let's-
But that's why we're going to have the discussion.
That's right. I, but I just, no, I, I guess, maybe you misunderstood.
Okay.
This is not free money, and that's what people need to understand. And like nothing else we do, it's not free money. That, that's all I wanted to be, to be clear, because it's not like the state saying, if you do this wonderful thing, you know, and the exemption equals, just make up a number, say it's $100,000 off the tax levy, the state's not going to turn around and write us a check for $100,000 to cover that. We all have to pick up the tab. And actually, $100,000 spread across all of us, probably not a big deal, easily done. But if it's, you know, a million dollars or, you know, then we're, you know, because, you know, as we all know, what's it, three, three and a quarter, $325,000 is a percent on the tax levy? Right, what's the nu, what's the magic number? Oh, it's now five, okay, sorry. Um, so, but I mean, just, that, that's, that's all I'm saying. So I, you know, don't, don't misunderstand or never misconstrue-
You're talking to the camera.
No, I know, but no, I'm talking to you too. Don't ever misconstrue my feelings for veterans who've served this country. But people shouldn't just think that this is, this is a, a free check. It's not, so we have to step lightly, that's all I'm saying.
One, one thing I feel about this is, I'm not sure that, I was elected to decide who pays what with the taxes. I mean, we do that, as to what everyone as a whole does, but I don't think it's up to me to pick and choose who can be exempt. I think that's something that ought to be voted on by everybody. I, I think it's a great idea, however, I, I'm not sure everyone out there wants me to make their mind up for them, to decide for them.
Quite frankly, this is the kind of thing that I, I would be more comfortable having a public hearing to hear what the public said.
I agree.
Because if I get 100, you know, people out the door saying, this is a great thing, do it, it's, it's a no-brainer. You know, that, you know, but, because really that's the effect of this. That's what people need to understand, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah, and as usual, though, the timeframe is such that to get that public hearing into the, into the schedule is going to require some hardships from people in an extra board meeting. And I think that, I think there's something we need to support, because I think it's a good idea to consider, but like you say, Kevin, we need to understand the full impact and the individual impact it, it projects, and to give the public an opportunity to speak, uh, to their support or non-support of it, based on their economic situations.
So is it possible to, uh, have the presentation enlisted as a public hearing for our next board meeting?
Yes, I think so.
The next regular scheduled one, I'm going to-
Yeah, the next, no, the next regularly, we have, um, our plan was if we were moving forward with this, we would put it on the, um, the first February board meeting, the second February board meeting, but it's at the second February board meeting that, that if we're going to move forward, the Board of Education has to vote on it. So if we put it on and, and publicize it as a presentation and a public hearing, and Debbie will have to figure out how we do all that, um, and any legal ramifications of the public hearing notification, we can have our presentation and, uh, have that considered the public hearing as well.
Going with that, would we have to have, side on what percentage of the assessed values?
Yes.
Ahead of that meeting?
By the, by the vote, yep.
By the vote.
So the spreadsheet you do is going to give us a couple of different-
What I'm going to do, what I was planning, what I was going to plan, planning to do is do the scenarios. I would, I would take you through and show, uh, first of all, I'll give you all the spreadsheets. So you have those to review, they're Excel sheets, easy to read. Um, and then for that presentation, show what a, what a, you know, what, what the minimum, uh, you know, the support is, what the state law basic maximum, something like three quarters of the way in and, and then the full, so that you can kind of get an idea. And you'll have right in front of you the, you know, the spectrum of, uh, you know, of, of where it falls. It'd be a lot of numbers if, if, if you did it, you know, all the way, you know, every single one of them, but I think everybody would get the idea at the minimum, the 25% level, 50% level, 75, and then full, you know, something like that.
Wayne, do you have the level of detail that would allow you to tell us how much property we're talking about in terms of assessed value?
Yep.
So in other words, you understand the assessed value of all the, of the collective veterans in each town?
Yep.
Okay. And so from that, we should be able to calculate the, the transference of the, the tax burden?
The, the easy part, or not easy, the easy part, the, the part that's very, uh, clear to present is as a whole. Trying to do it on any kind of an individual level would, would be very, very difficult to, to, to try to process how that's going to, you know, how the portionate might shift as a result of that. There's some things that are, that are unknown, um, that, how many people will sign up for this veteran's tax credit between now and the tax levy? So there's some, there's some unknowns that I'll bring up during that presentation too, so that we understand that what we're putting out there right now might not necessarily be what the case is by the time we have our tax levy set.
Sure, I understand there's a lot of variables and a lot of moving parts, but I want to have enough facts in front of us that we can-
Yep.
-make decisions based on worst-case scenarios.
Yep.
But you're basing it on the counties' roles?
That's an interest, oh.
Because I'm not really sure, I, I've never claimed a, uh, anything, so-
Well, each town?
There may be plenty of people like me who've never, never claimed any, any disability or anything.
Absolutely.
We learned that last night as well.
Sure did. It, it would, it would be, depend on your situation, you know? Like I said, wartime means somebody that's served in a war, but if you were in a combat zone and in a war, y, y, your percentage goes up. And if you also have a disability as a result, and, you know, you, you get, um, assigned a percentage of disability up to a certain degree, and if you look at the sheets that I gave you, there's some, you know, there's some maximums and minimums in that second, the third column, I should say, you know, it's like $12,000.
Not every, yeah, I think the point was too, that not everybody registered, so-
That's absolutely right.
Yeah.
Absolutely right.
But we're basing it on the information that we know right now.
Which has got to be the minimum. It, it's going to be the bottom side of the number.
Yep.
Well, the worst case.
Would you be able to give us the-
Best case, because everybody else-
The county percentage that they've done?
Uh, yep, I have it here.
Responsible for, but I-
What's the county, what's the counties at?
You could give it, with the rest of your information there.
One, one meeting, please.
I've got one other question. Does that affect, uh, fire district taxes? No.
No.
No?
Um, I don't know.
Could you point that out too, please?
What was the question?
But that should have been already taken care of at the county level.
Well, it affects your fire taxes.
On, not on the school tax.
Does the exemption carry over to the fire tax? Probably not the one that's applied for here, but there might be one for, you know-
Well, that's not a question-
Fire taxes, what I'm talking about. Property, real property tax.
That's not a question for the school board, right?
Fairview Fire District, I was going to say.
He can get the information, I assume.
I'll, I'll find out.
And Wayne, the other thing is, you know, um, and this is probably something you can't, can't ascertain quickly, but they also refer to the Gold Star Parent. You know, if our parents in the county whose child, male or female, met this criteria, and the one I'm assuming is that they were killed in a combat, in a combat war zone area, that that exemption could be allowed to carry over to them. That may be even a more difficult identification as to how many, how many people within our district qualify for that exemption.
And I should have been clear about that too, if it, that's what they're-
A spouse of-
They're saying that it's a, right, is it additional, uh, exemption? You'd actually have to have a separate hearing for that one, uh, and board resolution if you decided to, to go with the additional ones.
Yeah, that's, that's an add-on.
So an additional question there.
But how do you know how much that would affect us?
What are the criteria that, um, members of the public or taxpayers would have to, uh, show in order to gain the exemption?
Yeah, who vets it?
I think it's your veteran identification. And I don't know, Doug, I don't, I don't know too much about what, you know, what an actual veteran carries, but I'm sure there's identification in, uh, some paperwork that would support that you were a veteran of war, um, whether or not you're in a combat zone and, you know, if what, and I, I'm sure that if there was a disability, there's this percentage that's, uh, the-
I don't carry anything actually, but, uh, I have it in my, you know, at home.
Right.
Your separation papers, if you separated, would have that information, correct?
All the paper.
And, yeah, an additional question is, what, what is the cost to the district to implement this? Is there a cost?
No.
There has to be a cost to somebody.
Is it, is it, it's, the, the same amount of taxes is going to be collected?
Right, the tax level doesn't change.
No, no, there's got to be, there's got to be a bureaucratic cost to implementing the exemption. Somebody has to handle the paperwork.
Well, that's done to the assessor's office.
That says it.
We won't even see it. That's, that's no different, that, yeah, the county handles it, it goes on, on your assessment and it goes out as part of your tax bill. It's kind of like the star exemption. We don't handle the paperwork, the county does.
Okay, yeah, that's more or less the question I was getting at. We're not handling it directly.
But notice that it doesn't get to the state level.
I, I just want to point one thing out, and it's important, and I'll put it in the presentation as well, is, is a town with, with a larger percentage, you know, Hyde Park is 65%, they're going to have a much greater number of vets in there. If that assessed value is removed from there, it, it will effectively go, you know, and change the percentage of what the tax levy is and, kind of like what our situation was this year, uh, when the assessed values went down, could be, could very well become a, a very similar issue.
But why would you assume that the percentage of veterans in each town would be different from town to town?
Population.
It's just because you have one large town and, and four, much smaller.
Okay, but-
Yeah, but that percentage-
If you've got 20% of the, of any population in, in every town is a veteran, then the effects should equal out. So you would have a tax shift from, from veterans to non-veterans, but you shouldn't have a town-to-town transfer.
I, I, but I think the reality of would be, for many of the situations we're talking about, the wars we're situating, the veterans would have been drawn from the lower socioeconomic groupings. And therefore, and those we do know concentrate differently in, in different, different parts of our community. We've got five communities here and the breakdowns are different for each of the groups.
I'm not convinced it's necessarily lower, because you would also have, um, veterans from prior generations and prior wars.
Understand. Where, where there was a draft, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be. Uh, where now it's mostly a volunteer grouping, it shouldn't be. But the Korean War, the Vietnam War, I think they're a different, different classification. They tended to draw from a certain-
They did, but my point is that over time, I would presume that that generation is no longer in the same socioeconomic, uh, class as the, the veterans from, say, Afghanistan.
Understand, but you know, by the same token, if I can believe everything I read in the paper, we've taken the, the current veterans and thrown them into a lower socioeconomic classification, because they're coming back at a time when there are no jobs available. They could have been establishing themselves when they were at war, and now they're coming back and looking for a job and there are none. It's a crazy situation, so you can't predict where it's going to balance out.
I'd, I'd really like to have this discussion when we do, when we see the percent, because, you know, it's going to be-
Yeah.
Understand.
We'll have more information.
Okay, but part of the conversation is about the information we want to see.
Okay.
And so the other question I have is whether we have any information that we can associate the tax exemptions that we're considering against the income of the individuals that would receive it? Is there any way that you can gain access to that information or correlate it for us?
As, as a whole, I could do it against the RWADA, which is a, you know, the to, the total of the veteran's tax exemptions against what the, the wealth ratio is, but I'm not sure that-
Yeah, that doesn't get us where we want to be, so, okay.
And Wayne, if I read the, the end of it, it looks like it says the, the first public hearing is for the default exemption as described in the chart. If we wanted to consider lowering the exemption or higher in the exemption, then we're forced to have at least a second public hearing, which is going to put us beyond the timeframe that we can, you know, are we limiting ourselves? Have they limited us to a situation where the only thing we can consider is the defined limits or the single exemption? I'm not sure how that reads.
Good clarification. We, we can have a resolution by the second meeting in February if we were to have the, the hearing and the presentation at the next meeting, and you can, in the same resolution, I clarified that today, not only vote to have the exemption, but to have it at whatever rate you, you choose.
In other words, we can meet the timeframe and still be able to set the specific percentage?
So, so you-
Percentage and the, and the exemption can be done at the same time. It's some of the additional ones, um, like if you want to do the Gold Star, you'd have to have a separate hearing for something like that.
But the way this reads, and I'm just reading it now, it says, if the board is interested in setting higher limits or different limits, a second public hearing and resolution is required. You're saying you get a clarification today that said if we held, if we held the meeting You're saying you get a clarification today that said if we held the meeting we're planning on, which would be a regular board meeting and a public hearing on the proposal, we could vote on different limits at the second meeting? But would we have to have a public hearing at that second meeting as part of the board meeting before we took the vote? That's what I love about the documents we're given. They say something, and when you ask for clarification, the response is totally different.
Okay, for the public out there, if you do a Google on tax law 458A, you'll see the whole law. If you, I've done it. If you scroll down, the item number two describes the tax implications and the deductions in great detail. Anybody wants to look it up before next meeting, that's what to do.
Yeah, I just looked at it, and just for Kerry's information, I'm seeing a mention of fire districts. Says county, municipal, village, city, town, and then they just, the law was just revised to include school districts. That's why we're talking about it now.
That's correct. Okay, anybody else?
Just one last question. If we do not take action on this this year, does that preclude us from doing something next year?
Absolutely not.
Okay, if we just simply need more time to discuss and recognize the impact of this, it could be something could be done for next year.
If you remember what you said last night, Wayne, though, once we set it, we can't lower it.
That's correct. That was pointed out by several people when I was doing my research, that as you're thinking about what it is you want to set, the important thing to note is that if you went to the highest, you could never go backwards. If you went to, like, the lowest or the lower end, you could always go up.
And if we leave it to next year, we can be just like every other politician in the world, kick it down the road and not make a decision until we absolutely have to.
I'm not a politician.
That's right, I'm a school board member.
Okay, all right. And we move on to preliminary budget and tax presentation, which I'm sure Mr. Eggleson has been on the edge of his chair waiting for. Isn't that true?
Actually, he helped us last night make recommendations for this presentation.
There you go. Yep, yep, I understand. You already told me that might happen, so go.
Just throw a match in the garbage can.
Good luck tonight, Glenn.
Just having fired up all those George Foreman grills.
The illegal ones.
Even higher education has key problems.
Why would that be? Zero, 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 minus seventeen wind chills, you kidding me? I'm living in a basement because it's warm.
For the students, if you need a signature, you, please, feel free to use this as an opportunity to get a signature. Is that what you meant? You don't need someone to sign it? Okay.
All right, you're just here for the fun of it. That's good, good, civic.
Oh, you're going to speak, oh, okay.
Oh, public participation, that's coming up.
All right.
Sorry, I thought you needed a signature.
Clarification, at times we have groups of students that care because of class requirements, and they need a signature to identify the fact they've been here. And some of them have hung around till 11 o'clock at night, not interrupting and looking for a signature, and we've felt really poorly about that, so we let them know you can sneak over and get a signature after your hour's up.
And public participation is after this presentation.
We're almost there.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, preliminary budget discussion is what we're going to speak about tonight, and some of the things are just pretty ordinary for our processes for budget. The preliminary budget discussion is the district's first step, certainly, and it occurs early in the budget process. All of our known fixed increases for things that are defined and fixed, like salaries, benefits, and debt service are all put into place. Things that we know about are put into this estimation for this evening. And again, I expressed that this is the very beginning, and the budget changes quite a bit from this time to where we end up in April, and finally in May. The Board of Education parameters, I just thought it was important to remind that all the work that was done in October and November to put together budget parameters that help us direct which way we move for budget process. We have in those parameters the ability to do an additional budget vote, the fact that we want to put clear information out there about what the difference between a shared as what will occur if the budget doesn't pass in the time of contingency budget. All district and board approved plans will continue based on the ability to fund them. So, we do a lot of work with the revenues that come into the district, and what the expenses are increased to, and the ability to get in between what that means for us. And that's what we'll start to talk about just a little bit tonight. Our fund balance will continue to be managed. The district will create a responsible budget, and the tax cap will be reported as it is tonight and throughout the entire process. As we've learned throughout the last two years of dealing with the tax cap, that it becomes a major factor in how we make our decisions for budget and the whole cycle for 1415. The budget messages from the state have been and have come true. The governor's budget did come through, and we did receive an increase to our state aid in the executive proposal. So, they alluded, and it came true. For us, that was an additional $1.4 million, of which $712,000 of that is an offset or a wash to our state aid, which is actually an increase to our expense on the budget side or our debt service. So, the revenue and the increased expense match. And so, we really can't count that as an increase because the expense went up just as much as the revenue. And we knew that when we went out for projects in the past. But that does mean, you know, approximately $710,000 in additional aid, which, you know, certainly will come in handy. I think it's about 2.19 percent. Sorry, 3.19 percent for us as an increase. And we certainly will use that, you know, as the process moves along. Lowering taxes was a central theme. Governor Cuomo suggested using state funds to freeze property taxes for two years with some limitations on how that works. Proposed a $2 billion bill to fund statewide technology in what he called smart schools. So, we'd be interested to see how that winds up coming about in March, when the legislators had the chance to make recommendations against the executive proposal. And one of the other things that we thought was important that might have an effect on us is the proposal to offer full day universally provided pre-kindergarten.
Wayne, can I offer just a comment on it at this point? What we're talking about on this slide is the points of interest that affect us as a school district in the governor's proposal for a budget.
Proposal, yep.
Any relationship between this and reality may be an accident because the final say is when the legislature votes on a budget as worked out between Cuomo and... In previous years, Cuomo and the state legislature. This year, we keep hearing that there's another wrinkle in there because of the new mayor in the city is making a play for money also and fighting the governor on his proposal. So, there's a third party in this triangle that's going to affect how these final numbers iron out.
Good point. More on process, we reflect continued state aid revenue increases when made. Again, as Dan pointed out, the final number comes the end of March, it's due March 31st. The gap elimination is still in place, so we do have a negative piece that's been around for several years in our budget, or our revenue budget. We are still subject to the tax cap restriction, and we'll talk about what the 1.468 CPI means to the tax cap formula. The budget is created conservatively through a realistic review of our needs. Each and every budget user is really reviewing what they do in their department and coming up with ways to bring numbers down. We certainly will include the analysis of class sizes and how attrition may work into play as our enrollment levels are reduced in the district and reflect the increases to employee benefits, which are, you know, some of them are actual at this point in time. So, what is the estimated budget to budget increase at this very preliminary point in time? It's 5.6. There's a 5.6 increase between the budget of 1314 and what preliminary came out in 1415. It's by no means what it will wind up being. A lot of work will go into this, and work will be done to significantly decrease that number.
Reduce.
So, the assumptions that have been made so far, and so I think it's important to know what pieces of information are assumptions in this budget. And we look at the first group, and that's our unit contract increases. And a total of those with step included is $1.5 million. And you'll see that BOSI's is the next one on the line, and that's estimated at this point. They gave us preliminary figures, and they gave us kind of a pace to start, and that was 6%. Insurance, the same thing, they gave us a preliminary place to start. But between the time I made this presentation, and I got an email yesterday, that's changed already. Our legal expenses, our health insurance is at 8%. As you can see, that's a rather large piece of the pie. When you see the next slide, health insurance is about a $13 million expense to our district, so a small increase in that or a big increase equals a large piece of increase to our budget. And then our retirement, something interesting happened this year. Our ERS rate actually went down. You see a negative there. And our TRS rate went up only by 1.5%. The rate is now 17.75, but the budget increase wound up being 13.1% or $672,000. Payroll taxes are taxes or something that are always going to happen, so as you're increasing salaries, you're going to have to increase those payroll taxes to go along with that. Our debt service, as I mentioned earlier, our revenue meets the expense, so that $586,000 will be covered by that $700,000 in building aid. And a reconciliation will happen by the time we get to March. And then there were some budget adjustments due to retirement for a small piece. But the total over last year's budget right now, as it stands, at this very preliminary stage is $4,700,000. And then in the next slide, you see this graphically, and you can kind of see the two or three or four major budget drivers that are there, and you can evidently see that salaries, benefits, you know, debt service are major drivers for our budget. So, what does the tax cap look like for us for 2014-15? The following two major factors have caused limitations. As I mentioned earlier, the low tax growth rate due to decreasing CPI, lack of inflation, has caused what we've typically been able to enter into the formula of 2% down to, as you see here, for 1.46%, which you'll see in a further slide, is means a lot for us and our ability to raise taxes under the tax cap law. And the second piece is that there wasn't a high enough increase in TRS to take that exemption on the tax cap. And that also, you know, while it's a good thing because we didn't have a high increase in TRS, we can't use it against the tax cap, so our ability moves down as a result. The tax cap will continue to limit the district's resources or ability to raise taxes. And the following slide shows our first draft of the tax cap. So, with everything we know, just like the preliminary budget, this is our preliminary tax cap. And what we did is we took the year that we were going into on the left, from 1314 into 1415, and we compared that to last year on the right-hand side. And as you can see, we've set it up very similar to how we set up the presentation for the fireside tax chat that we had and to try to simplify what the formula looks like. The formula, as it comes from the state, is a little bit more complicated, so we utilized it on a plus and minus basis. And you can see on the right-hand side the major differences. One thing that came rather late before the presentation was the change for us for a tax-based growth factor. You'll see that that's actually grown from 1.0054 to 1.0059, and that netted us $117,000. The only other increase is on the bottom for capital projects, but only $5,093. But the two major, or three major hits are in the payments in lieu of taxes for $139,000. We used to have a pilot or a payment in lieu of taxes on our books that doesn't exist there anymore, so we had to take that exemption away. As I mentioned, the tax levy growth factor or CPI went from 2% to 1.46, and you can see that meant an $807,000 difference for us in our ability to raise taxes under the tax cap. And the TRS one, which I had mentioned too, is $708,000 for not having that exemption. But again, on the expense side, we didn't have that increase, so it's positive and negative. But you'll see on the bottom, our decrease in the ability to raise taxes. Last year, we had the ability to go out for 3.99%. We decided not to, and it's important to note that the district went out for 2.68% rather than 3.99 in an effort to keep our taxes lower. So, when I did this subtraction, you can see that, based on our ability to raise taxes, we could have went out for 3.99, we went out for 2.68, but the difference between the maximum calculation is 1.96, you know, difference based on the things that have changed in this year's tax cap formula. And that's the equivalence of $1,031,000 less that we could raise in taxes. Our budget challenge for this year, often referred to as our budget gap, as it stands right now, and it's important to understand that, and I forgot to mention here, that some of the budget does not include some of the regular expenses that go up. Things like fuel have not been figured in, utilities and so on and so forth, are things that, you know, we haven't even got to. Again, preliminary piece of the budget, so I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that. But back to the budget gap, our current budget increase is $4.7 million, and our estimated allowable increase per the tax cap is 1.1, which leaves us with $3.5 million to come up with. So, that's where we start from, you know, as the preliminary budget starts. The district is sensitive to the fiscal challenges our communities are facing. And please remember, you know, it's important to know this is very preliminary, and work is going on to close this gap and will.
Wayne, wouldn't that be reduced by the $700,000 that we're getting in additional money this year?
Yes, yep.
Okay, so that would be 2.8?
What comes next? The buildings departments are very busy finishing up their final budgets and be presenting those to the cabinet in the next couple of weeks. Budget revisions will continue. I'm sure lots of conversations will go on. Presentations will continue from this point on and through April. And up until May's vote, the Board of Ed will review and discuss all considerations. The final budget is presented by the superintendent in the middle of April, and the budget vote is on Tuesday, May 20th of this year. If you're interested in more information, there's a great group of folks that meet on a semi-regular basis, and that's called the Budget Input Group. And if you're interested, the dates are up here. We encourage you to come and be part of and really have a more intimate conversation and be able to voice opinions and review, you know, how things are presented and really to give your input. It's a great group, and we look forward to, you know, always welcoming new members to come in. New members come in each year. And also, I wanted to let you know that we'll have our budget link up. So, you know, for those people that don't get to get to the meetings but want some information, all these presentations, all of our budget stuff will be posted on our website. In the very near future, some of the things are already up there, but a lot of work is getting done to make sure that that's there, and that's right off our main webpage. So, mark your calendars. 1415's vote is Tuesday, May 20th, same place, Tavon Middle School, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And that concludes the preliminary budget discussion.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a few, but let me get to the first one on slide nine, Wayne. I believe, at least I think the ERS and TRS identifications are swapped. The TRS levy went down and the ERS levy went up. But if I read the slide information on slide number nine...
Let me just see which one's nine, because...
The one we have all the numbers on it.
There's no exclusion for TRS or ERS?
Neither one.
Next one, yeah, keep going. And then underneath, there's explanation. This is due to the ERS rate decreasing. It actually increased, and the increase in the TRS is not sufficient to trigger it, but the TRS went down, right?
ERS went down.
ERS went down, but you...
ERS went up.
Yeah, go back to slide four.
But not enough to kick in the...
Or page four, slide seven.
Okay, I screwed up my reading, all right. And just a question, because the BOSI's budget is independent of our budget.
That's correct.
But is it not still constrained like ours is by a budget cap?
Nope.
No.
They don't levy property taxes.
Boy, that stinks.
We do, they don't.
That stinks. So, we're bound by a tax cap that runs under 2%, but they're free to raise their costs by 8%, 6%.
And that's just preliminary.
Not being at the end of the food chain.
Any other questions or comments? I just have one comment. I know you're going through budget building with your, you know, various groups, and in the past, I know they've come in with, "I need this, and I'll trade this for it." And I think we're beyond that now. I think I want, I like to hear you tell us that they came in with, "We're going to do with less." We're not going to trade stuff for, you know, "I need this, and so I'm not going to take this that I already have. If I need something new, I'm going to have to get rid of this and something else." Because I want to see those budgets come in lower than they were last year, if it's possible. If it's not possible, then we're talking about staff, losing staff. So, that's the trade-off. And I might point out that $2.8 million is the equivalent of 28 teachers money-wise. That's what you're talking about, $100,000 apiece, so.
One other thing, Wayne, on the assumptions being made, you had the payroll taxes as a 3.7% increase. That's not the taxes we pay, we return to the government as the taxes on earnings of our people here. That's something like that stupid MTA tax.
It's like the employer, it could be multiple, that's gone now.
It's money we're paying on payroll we pay out.
The district's employer contributions to certain...
Social Security and Medicare.
And does that include the MTA tax we were paying at one point?
That's since gone.
That's gone. I mean, that was the thing that we paid out, but we were supposed to get back. And I understand it's still, there are still people paying that, though, aren't there?
The MTA tax might come back, you know.
Yeah.
It's back for, I know it's, that didn't go away for private employers, I don't think.
Okay, yeah, that's right.
But, you know, Dan, just to your point, you know, yeah, I mean, so it is your FICA and Medicare taxes that the employer has to contribute.
We have to make a contribution to their employment.
Salaries go up, so do the taxes behind them, so.
Right. But it's not solely out of their money, it's also, we have to pay a contribution.
That's right, that's right. The employer and the employee share the contribution.
Right, okay.
Yep, I just think it's worth noting. I mean, you do have a note in the bottom left-hand corner here that, I mean, the numbers that you're projecting are somewhat what you know at this point. There's a whole bunch of numbers that we don't know at this point. I mean, everybody realizes they're paying more for fuel oil, they're paying more for electricity. I mean, all the things that we buy cost more, so, you know, I hate to be doom and gloom, but I mean, the numbers, you know, it just, when you add everything up, it's just going to keep going up and up and up. And there's going to be some real hard decisions going forward.
Unfortunately, gloom and doom right at the moment is our job.
Yeah, I guess the thing I find hardest to understand is all of these individual costs are going up, but the CPI went down.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Any other questions? Thank you, Wayne.
Who didn't say that?
Did you pay them to be here?
Yeah, I did. Wayne, I hate, Wayne, I hate to tell you this, but I think, I think they're clapping, because now, now we can have public participation, and they get to talk. Yeah, that's...
Not clapping for you.
Can I have a motion to enter public participation, please?
Second.
Any discussion? I just, for those of you that are new, try and keep your questions to three minutes. We're not gonna cut you off at exactly three minutes, but we only got twenty minutes for this thing, so if you're all gonna get up there, be as quick and concise as you can, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Oh, and we don't answer right away, so don't, don't, don't...
Once we close participation...
We're not ignoring you, we're giving you stony silence.
And then we answer the question.
Yeah, after you're done, then we'll, then we'll answer questions or make comments.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay, we are now in public participation. Anyone who would like to speak to the board, please come up to the mic.
Hello. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board.
Did you identify yourself?
My name is Giovanni Mejia, I'm a senior at FDR High School.
Thank you.
I wrote a paper titled "In Defense of the Humanities." I'd like to start off by saying that we've learned that English honors for eleventh graders at FDR High School, it seems that the director of the humanities has cut the honors English program for eleventh graders next year, which we don't know if the members of the Board of Education are aware of, or even if the principals are aware of. And as a student who took eleventh grade honors last year, I was horrified at hearing this news, because it's probably one of the most enlightening classes that I've taken throughout my career in high school. We do not always know the benefits of what we study, and therefore should not rush to reject some forms of research as less deserving than others. I believe that Ms. Chason, the teacher that conducts everything, I guess you would say, throughout the course of the year, she introduced us with interpretation of Romantics and Trentalism and various types of literature that we would otherwise not be able to encounter. As a student who's taken twelfth-grade AP British literature this year, I found it very, very useful and very fulfilling to be able to take that class, and then to be able to go into twelfth-grade British literature, and to be able to read, we're reading Wordsworth, part of Romanticism right now during the nineteenth century. And I found that reading the text, I'm able to appreciate it more, not just as text on thin dead paper, but more as something that transcends time, something that I feel and I can see in my heart that symbolism and all, and everything are part of what I read and what I feel, it's really important, because I feel that eleventh grade honors last year really opened my eyes to the beauty of literature. And throughout my high school career, English was not as important to me, and reading literature and writing essays and taking the time to participate in English class didn't seem as important to me. But since my time that I've taken that class, I've begun to appreciate everything that English has to offer, the essays, the preparation, the communication skills that one acquires over time about reading not only just text, but appreciating everything that it has to offer. I understand that it's important to not give up on honors English eleventh grade, because it's, I find it to be really, really important, and the class, my other peers, that some of which are here and some of which are not, who wanted to be here, we bonded over our love for literature, and we've really grown to appreciate it. And I hope that educators in this room feel that we've taken time to come here and to present our feelings and emotions, and to support this curriculum, and that's about it. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board?
Okay, my name is Emily Noonan, and I am also speaking on behalf of the eleventh grade honors English cut. I am also currently a senior at FDR High School. And this class cut obviously does not affect me directly, because I am a senior, but it affects the younger students in my high school. For me, this class is exactly what I needed in my junior year, because the way our school works is that for eleventh grade, there's regular U.S. history, and there's regular English, and then there's AP U.S. history and honors English. And then there's a program called American Studies, where the AP and the English work together. So if this class were to be cut, the only chance that a student would have to take a higher in English would be the American Studies, which only offers thirty slots. So there's that. But let me backtrack to tenth grade. For me, I was an honor student in tenth grade, and by the end of the year, I did not meet the requirements to be in eleventh grade honors English. I knew that I had the potential, and that I had to fight it, so after a couple of emails and talks with my guidance counselor, I was okay to be in the eleventh honors. This push was exactly what I needed, and I know that the push of eleventh grade honors is what many others needed as well. I learned how to, because of the push of this class. I learned how to read and interpret the most difficultly worded sentences. This class prepared me so well for the Duchess English class that I'm currently in now. But this class cut isn't just about me, it's about the twenty-five-plus kids Ms. Chason has in her honors class each year. This class needs to stay, for the kids who are not as strong with history as they are with English. This class needs to stay because of the push for full potential in each student it gives. It makes no sense to me that a class that teaches how to read and write so persuasive and beautifully would be cut. No matter the major a kid chooses to pick in college, they will need to know how to write. It makes no sense to me that a class with twenty-five kids plus every year would be cut, whereas a class that I'm currently in now has twelve kids and is not an elective, wouldn't be. I am not speaking to defend Ms. Chason, because many already know how amazing of a teacher she is, and how fit she is to teach eleven honors English. I am speaking for the students who need that push the course offers, for the students who have, for the students who have too much potential for a regular English class, and for the students who have no idea what they're capable of writing and creating, because they're the students who would excel and who need this course. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board?
Hi, my name is Nicolette Rogers, and I'm a junior at FDR right now. In addition to what my fellow students have said, I'm here to voice my concern about the district's decision to eliminate the honors eleven English course. This means there would only be the Regents' English eleven or the American Studies course available for the upcoming students. Our district's mission statement, as seen up there, is "The Hyde Park Central School District empowers our community to strive for excellence and embrace the opportunities of our globally connected world." Doesn't this mean our district expects us and encourages us to challenge ourselves in our academics? And if so, then our district should be sure to provide hard-working students with such opportunities and not deny them. Also, the film component and/or overnight trips of the American Studies class may not appeal to every honor student. Therefore, they would not be able, they would not be forced to take, they would be forced, sorry, to take the Regents' English course and miss out on excelling in honors that they are definitely meant to take. And on a personal level, in addition especially to what Emily was saying, I've only been in Ms. Chason's English class from the beginning of the year, so a couple months, and I've already seen so much growth in myself that I would hate to see the class below me have to miss out on something like this. Thank you.
Anybody else wanna add to that? I guess so.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Kara, and I'm also in Ms. Chason's eleventh grade honors class right now. And to kind of add on to what Nicolette and Emily have said, then, okay. English is related to every career, and no matter what your major is, in order to get into college, you must be able to write well and show that you can organize your thoughts. And it also doesn't make sense that a student who has spent years in honors English would not have the opportunity to do so in eleventh grade unless they are as equally strong in history. Also, current sophomores only taking honors ten English would be denied a chance to continue to excel and would be, quite frankly, placed in a class that would bore them. Finally, eleventh grade is an important year for high school transcripts, and it would look terrible for an honor student to suddenly not be in an honors English class. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Jackie Squire, I'm a senior at FDR. And there are, of course, like a hundred reasons why this class shouldn't be cut, but I just wanted to talk about how it personally affected me last year. I had like a really, really tough year last year. I was like depressed and like apathetic, and just going through like a lot of emotional stuff. And not only was that course challenging and interesting, but I think it like changed my whole attitude on life. Strong women like Hester Brennan, Ms. Chason, taught me to stand up for myself and what I believe in. And if someone doesn't like what you believe in, tough, because that's what I'm doing. And I loved that class so much that I'm gonna major in English education next year. And pretty much, it's the best class I've ever taken, and depriving the underclassmen of this great lesson would be unjust and unfair.
Hello, my name is Sarah Wells, and I have been going to Hyde Park Schools since kindergarten. And never in my life, never in my career of schooling, have I experienced a class like English eleven honors. I've never had a class that has made me want to learn for the purpose of gaining the knowledge, rather than to pass the test. English honors eleven gave me that, Ms. Chason gave me that. And it was honestly a life-changing experience to take that class. I had it eighth period last year, and I would look forward to it all day. I loved it. I loved listening to the material, I loved speaking class, I loved the class discussions we would have. I've never had a class that allowed the depth of discussion that we had. There was the discussion of morality, the idea of power versus authority. It was fascinating. And I think that if other students were to miss out on this opportunity, they'd be missing something that every student should have in their education. Yeah, that's about it.
Would anybody else like to address the board?
My name is Serena. I am, I guess I'm a resident, I graduated last year. I'm just gonna start by saying that English eleven honors, which I took two years ago, is my favorite class to date, even after a semester of college. I actually learned more about our country's early and middle history than I did in my American history class that year. It was more relevant, more specific, and more interesting. We read works within each period of American history that allowed us to understand the society and the human factor, rather than having just a brief overview of everything. And the second thing, English eleven honors taught me personal lessons, like the necessity of self-reflection, self-restraint, industrious working, and clean living, all through the very in-depth studies of the writings of people like Ben Franklin, Thoreau, and Emerson. Taught me about human nature by reading and analyzing many other works, like The Crucible, The Scarlet Letter, and The Great Gatsby, there were more. And they each offered a unique insight into human nature and human psychology, which are, I have found unparalleled in any other literature that I have read yet or heard of. Also unparalleled was Betty Chason's teaching. She made each and every paragraph mean so much more than what it would have meant if I had read it on my own. And her words and the way she expressed her opinion on the literature and her way of explaining it to us really allowed me to come to a much deeper understanding of that literature. And the third thing, which I think you guys might like, English eleven honors helped me become a better writer entering that class. I was already an above-average writer, but that year I managed a one hundred on the English Regents. I was one of four, and all four who got a one hundred were from the English eleven honors class. I don't think there were very many else in New York State that did that, but four of us. Yeah, Emily was one, too. The next year, which was my senior year, I took the DCC classes, the English one oh one oh two, and I easily got nineties and above on every essay, because of what Ms. Chason helped me with and what the reading that we did all year helped me learn. And then on my senior thesis paper, I got a ninety, would have been a ninety-six, but it was late. And many of my friends, or people that I knew from English eleven honors, also received excellent grades on their senior theses, and/or on their Brit Lit AP exams. One of my friends who also got a one hundred on the Regents' exam was in AP Brit Lit instead of the DCC classes, and in that class, they did a lot of peer review. And she noticed a significant gap in the quality of writing between English eleven honor students and even American Studies students. And I'm sure that honestly has a lot to do with, first, the teacher, and, second, what we specifically read in class, and how we went about reading it. So in summary, more specific look at American history, heritage and literature, it offered me insight into human nature and compelled me to self-reflect, and it creates better writers. And honestly, they shouldn't cut the only chance the Hyde Park Central School District has for intelligent students.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Willow Pastoni. I'm not a very good student, and I don't do a lot of work, but this is, this is like the one class that I've ever taken that has topics and assignments that have really motivated me to want to do them. This is the only class that has ever had an assignment that talked about being a better person. And like, we just did a project about Benjamin Franklin's like thirteen virtues on moral perfection, and I've never had a class that deliberately gave you an assignment on how to better yourself and like be the person you wanna be. And I don't, I don't see why you would cut something that teaches students how to be better people besides just having standardized test scores. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Eglin?
Well, I'm Doug Eglington, I don't know any of you folks. I hadn't planned to talk tonight, but listening to these people, you should listen to them, okay? I majored in English and creative writing at a major, one of the top colleges in the country, you know, a thousand years ago. And...
I was there.
I don't know the issues involved here, and I may be all wrong about them, but this English learning to think, English and creative writing learning to think, we don't have enough people who know how to think.
Anyone else? I have a motion to close public participation, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? First of all, I'd like to compliment you all. This obviously was an effective class, because you all spoke very well. So I don't know any details, and I guess Corey could help us out with that.
So the topic of honors and advanced placement classes has been one that we've talked about many times. Every year, we review all of the courses that are being offered, and student participation in them, the course syllabus that's connected to them, et cetera. And the decision that was... And the decision that was made recently, which was not a single person's decision, it was made at a secondary council meeting with the building principal, the superintendent, myself, the rest of the secondary council members, was that rather than running Regents, honors, and a single session, section of American Studies, because the feedback we've had is that the American Studies program is so popular, is to actually add more sections. So one of the concerns I heard from one of you was that there are only 30 slots for American Studies. So in fact, we'll actually have more sections of American Studies. And I am hearing from some of you that that wouldn't be as appealing, but I can't say that that's the collective feedback that we've heard from staff or students. So I want to reinforce that we are very committed to continuing the option of advanced placement courses and high-level inquiry and high-level thinking skills being embedded in our programs. Much of what I think I'm hearing is certainly about a course, but it's also about a magnificent teacher who's not going anywhere and embeds a lot of the same kinds of strategies and passion into her other courses as well. So I don't know if Greer wants to add to that, but primarily what I would want you to know is that we aren't eliminating an advanced option. We're increasing the opportunity for students to take an advanced placement course, which has inherently a higher level of rigor because it has to go through the AP audit process. It is a combined course. Students earn credit in both Social Studies and English. And the sense that we've had is that it's appropriate at this point to think about having additional sections of that higher-level rigor course.
Yeah, and Cora, correct me if I'm wrong, and I know Barbara Marine is here too, but the, the, the course that we will offer next year is, we will have two sections of English honors, but they happen to be connected to also simultaneously taking the AP American Studies.
Yes.
So on the transcript, they get honors English, 11 English honors and American Studies AP. And the, but they, but they're enrolled in both. So they're actually enrolled in two upper-level courses. Correct. That are simultaneously run to offer a very deep, rich experience, albeit different from the single English honors. And that, is it accurate that there are 13 enrolled in English honors this year right now? It started out, it was small, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's approximately that.
Yeah. So what we're trying to do is maintain as many high-level courses and, and double the amount that we would be able to put in that one section.
Could I just make something?
Sure.
Could you clear it to me? Up for me? In the American Studies, you have to be recommended for both the history and the English. What about the student who doesn't do very well in, in history and who really likes English? I mean, where do they do? I mean, it seems like you've left, you've left a segment of the population out using that, your logic. I just...
Yeah, no, that's, that's a fair question and I would actually go back to bar of in guidance because what I believe is true is that there isn't always equal previous success in both courses in order to find your way into that course. So I would certainly ask them for clarification and I'll do that and come back to you. But certainly, yes, the, the content is inclusive of both areas.
If I can comment, this is my 13th year on the board. I've sat through presentations on classes for 13 years. I've never heard a better recommendation, a better coverage, a more conclusive and enthusiastic support for a single program in all of those years. I heard words discussed and comments discussed about things within that course that I've never heard mentioned in any other course. Morality, unheard of. That word has never appeared once in 13 years, yet they say that they learned about morality, about improvement, about ways to treat and be comfortable with what they do and to interact with humanity. These are courses I've never heard mentioned in American History or American Honors courses or any of the other ones. It's been more stoic, more straightforward and restricted by the AP program, which I'm sure restricts the nature of the courses in questioning to eliminate any conversations or any discussions with that. I have never had a request or indication of a more significant course or a more productive course to be cut in 13 years, Cora, never.
Okay.
I'm kind of curious about why it seems as if American Honors, I'm sorry, American, American Studies and Honors, or English Honors 11th are mutually exclusive.
Well, it's a couple of things. One is the numbers. Our English Honors has been running low and in the times that we've been talking about relative to budget, we've been asked every year to take a look at sections. Are we running sections of 10 and 12 and 13 students or are we trying to run larger classes? So one of the issues is being responsible around enrollment and courses. The other is around the level of rigor and trying to increase the number of advanced placement courses. And this is a way of doing that. We've had input from staff and students that there's a much greater and growing interest in the American Studies program and we've only been able to provide one section of that. So in part, it's a response to requests that we've heard as well.
So I understand the, the drive to increase the size, the, the capacity that we have for American Studies. My question is, why is it inconceivable that we could have a class that serves both American Studies and English Honors 11th?
Well, it's not inconceivable. We're doing it now. But the, the recommendation from the whole team has been that it's, it meets our student needs more appropriately and more efficiently to make a change at this point. And I, again, I would suggest that many of the things that we're hearing about the quality of the instruction is not necessarily specific to that section of English. Some of that is about the qualities of a particular teacher and she brings those qualities to other sections that she teaches as well.
So that was the next thing I was gonna say is that it was hard to separate the class from the teacher in the comments we heard. And I think that a lot of the, the benefit that the, the student so eloquently pointed out was due to the teacher who was in the class.
Yep.
And, and there are just some teachers who are like that. So it's, regardless of what decision is made, I think that teacher's gonna continue to be in front of students making that kind of impact.
My concern is that the rigor of the American Studies program will limit her ability to delve into other areas that these kids have found so important and so significant. And I would like to understand, Cora, if you could talk to the teacher about their comments and allow them to talk to them about the comments they made and see if that, that potential does exist. I'd hate to see the values and exploration, these group of kids found in that class, because I found many, many ideas that they projected that I'd want to see perpetuated through the higher levels of education and get back to society.
Yeah.
Because I find them limited, I find them cut out, and I find them lacking in a lot of what I hear about higher education and I hate to see it lost.
Yeah.
It's a real concern of mine.
Well, I think there, I, I will check on that. I would also suggest that what I can bring back is also information about the American Studies program itself, where there may be some parallels. There are other courses where some of those similar themes in terms of reflection and introspection are also part of the content that we don't necessarily hear about in a board meeting. I'm thinking about our psychology courses and, and the AP courses. So I'll, I'll bring back as much information as I can.
I'll, I'll make this comment in front of the camera. And as you know, Cora, I've had eight kids graduate from this school. I've had several kids take the American Studies program. And over the years, my kids were in school, we always had dinner table discussions about what was going on, what was new, what was happening. Many of the subjects that I find so important that these kids brought up never come up in any of those discussions. So it leads me to feel that their subjects, because of the rigor of the course, have to be excluded.
Okay. I'll do my best to bring you back some answers.
Any other comments?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. First of all, to the, the very articulate students, thank you for your comments. Actually, I'm here because of, I was in your place once a long time ago when, when I was a senior at FDR on the student government. I, I think I became the treasurer, my best friend was the president, and he says to me one day at a student government meeting, he goes, "We gotta go to board meetings, we gotta keep an eye on what they're doing." And I think like within the first board meeting or the second one that we had attended and they, they were kind of like, "What are they doing?" Because they, we were sitting there like you, watching them. And, and then I stood up at the podium and then look where I ended up. So anyway, but no, congratulations, very articulate and, 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 and great comments. You know, just, just my one concern, you know, and I think, you know, the students, certainly these students have articulated it, but you know, i-if there's a student that either doesn't have the appetite for American Studies because that's a really a different course or has, you know, it could be really strong in, 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 in English, but yet just for whatever reason, history, social studies doesn't really do it for them and, and they don't make that level of being able to reach for the AP, you know? The, you know, great teacher or not, and I'm sure she is from what I'm hearing, you know, when, when you have to, if, if the choice is, it's either American Studies, which either I may not even get into or have no interest in, and, or drop back into Regents. Unfortunately, you know, you, you know, it's not just what the teacher does in the room, although certainly the teacher is, is a big part of it, but it's the students you're with. And you know, when, when you step back into that level, regrettably, you're not gonna have the caliber of, of, you know, the entire population's not gonna be the same caliber that you might be, you know, that you're striving for that honors level. And, and so the discourse just, it's just not the same, you know? And, and this is from a guy that English was not his favorite subject. But I learned how to write at FDR and when I got to college, you know, I remember one of my English professors said, "Where'd you learn how to write?" And I said, "Well, it was at high school in Hyde Park." He says, "You just, you write entirely different than anybody else does." And I said, "Well, is that good or bad?" He goes, "No, it's great." He goes, "Everybody should come into college knowing how to write like this." I think we've lost some of that because all those great teachers are gone, but I, I hope they're continuing it, but just how we, how we learned. And anyway, so that's my concern is that, you know, they've certainly articulated it and they don't need to do it, I don't need to do it for them, I mean, but, you know, so I said enough.
Doug, I just, just a comment, I was an engineering major and the truth of the matter was I took English as a foreign language.
Yeah, that's probably how it was for me too.
Yeah. And if I had my druthers right now after hearing this endorsement and I was able to, I would've liked to have audited this course this year. It just blows my mind.
And as one Doug to another, did you have those little slates when you were in school, like me? When, you know, the little, no, no, okay, just, just curious.
Doug, don't lie. I'm just curious.
You're a hammer and chisel to it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it was stone tablet, wasn't it? Doug?
Yes.
Okay. We are on to board discussion. Was there anything that anybody wanted to discuss in this section? We didn't have anything listed. It's always on the agenda just in case. If not, we'll move on.
Yeah, no, I don't think there's anything else.
Now we'll bring us to...
Oh, just wanna, I'm sorry, if, if you want to say something, you have to wait till the next public participation. That's kind of unfortunately the way it works though, so...
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Won't be as long a wait though.
So... We'll let the presiding officer decide that.
Well, you know my views, so...
Yeah, there's just...
I'll let, I'll let the, you can pick two people and come back.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, is that only one second?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one instead of 13, okay. Fine, thank you.
Thanks.
Me too.
And thank you for coming out tonight. On a cold, yeah, very cold night.
Okay, so let's, let's move on to unfinished business.
Can I have a motion for 9.1, second consideration, adoption of policies? That would be policy 6,000 fiscal management goals, 6,010 fiscal management operations, 6,150 budget transfers, 6,830 expense reimbursement, and 6,830 R. expense reimbursement regulations. Now, a motion, please. Any discussion? All in favor?
About second consideration. Already, already bashed it around.
Yeah, wow. Okay. That moves us on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion for the consent agenda as indicated in the, in the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I just wanted to point out that we have two teachers on here who are receiving 10-year appointments.
Eight, right?
It's teaching assistance.
Teaching assistance.
Pardon me.
Yeah.
Diana Peterson and Teresa DeFaleese.
Thank you.
Just wanted to express our congratulations.
Absolutely. And thank you for bringing that up. All in favor? Posed, motion carried. We're now at special ed, we should be, let me just get down there. May I have a motion for 11.1, special education placements?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
A quick summary, there were 16 IEPs presented to us, seven from the CPSC and nine from In the CPSC area, there were four, three students considered for initial eligibility. All were, all were deemed to be in need of the services. And at the CSE level, there were two transfer students, program reviews, which means students coming in from other districts with the programs and we continued them and won initial eligibility and that student was also deemed to be eligible for services. So we have six new students, three in the CPSC area and three in the school area that will be receiving services as a result of these IEPs.
Thank you, Dan. All those in favor? Posed, motion carried, thank you. May I have a motion for 11.2, settlement and general release agreement? The details are in the public contact.
So moved.
Noted. We have a motion, a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Posed, thank you. Can I have a motion for 11.3, capital project change order to Hudson Valley Electric?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Posed, motion carried. May I have a motion for 11.4, adopt the contract for excellence as, as shown in the PDF on the, in the public contact section?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
A quick question. Is this enumerating how we're spending funds that we are no longer receiving? Or are we still receiving C4E?
No, we're not receiving money, but we are still spending.
Right, there's no new allocation in the last several years. We just have to show that we're allocating as C4E existing staff. So the same person was here before in the general fund, now they're in a C4E code and we put it together with a rationale and a narrative to say why we're focusing on those staff.
And this is a result of, of what?
It came about with funding as part of our status.
Right. It's a no-longer-funded mandate.
Well, again, that was leading up to the question because it was a...
It takes me about an hour a year. That's the only work of it at this point. There's no other requirement.
But it was a result of a, it was a result of a status review that said we were lacking in something and we need to do more.
It was part of our, like, the, our improvement effort, school accountability. There had to be, I guess, in the state mind, there has to be a fiscal accountability relative to it. So they created this thing.
But are they still, are they still analyzing or still reviewing our need for this program and saying we have not made any improvements?
It, it's just gonna, I mean, every year I get notified that it's still here, but it's still here for everyone. You don't, you know, it's here until it's not here as a whole program, is my understanding.
But it has no relevancy to any, anything they're looking at. And we've got other programs we have to participate in because of analysis. This one, the analysis and stuff is gone, but the requirements have kicked the money in, is still there.
I mean, what I write gets reviewed and they call and they question and they say, "Oh, why are you focusing on this?" I mean, there's a, there's people who work at SED who are paid to ask about it.
Yeah, if we could save that money...
I'm sure they're in New York State or they're in India. No, no, I've-
Do we really know where they are?
No, I've met them. Yeah, there is, there are offices up there.
Know where they are, who they are, or what-
Just waiting for that to come through.
Right. Right.
Okay.
You're SED.
All in favor?
It's torturous every year, we have to deflect on the agenda.
I think we still have to vote, right? All in favor? opposed, motion carried. You opposed?
I'm opposed because there's no justification at this point.
Okay. Move on to eleven point five, amended consultant agreement with Christine Jones Realty, as to do with the rental possibilities of Hyde Park Elementary.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
I, I wasn't sure what the modifications were.
Yeah, that was the same question I've got.
We've had a couple of other documents where we've had highlighted, you know, like the policy changes. We could easily see what the differences were. I, unless I read it too quickly.
The difference was in the square, the difference was in the square feet, cost per square foot.
Okay.
There were some adjustments that were made to the-
I understand. And what I would have liked to have seen was the same kind of highlighting we got with the policy changes.
Oh, the one I saw-
It was indicated and read as a change, or the old and the new were shown, so we could see what the difference was.
I saw the actual document, and it was highlighted.
Oh, sure, you're privileged.
All of us in favor, did we, you didn't vote on it, right? Oh, we did vote on it? Okay.
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't.
All in favor? All in favor? I'm sorry. Opposed, okay, carry. Okay. And can I have a motion for eleven point six? The Hyde Park Elementary lease addendum for the town of Hyde Park, that's for the senior citizens?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, before we, before we, and I was fine with this, but I just happened to read through these documents, and, ooh, the heck is Bright Days LLC?
They're a daycare that rent out at Hyde Park Elementary.
Okay, so, why does the town of Hyde Park have to sign this?
There's probably several on there.
Nope, the town of Hyde Park supervisor signed this. And there's, I got two of them listed here, both for Bright Days LLC as the tenant, and both signed by Aileen Rohr. So, my question is, is this, was this the right document? Because wouldn't it be with the town of Hyde Park as the tenant? In other words, is Bright Days one tenant and Hyde Park is another tenant?
Yeah.
Hmm, I think we sent the wrong document to her to sign. Well, I'm just, because, I mean, because it's, you know, it defines the, the, I just happened to notice that, it defines the tenant as Bright Days LLC, not the town of Hyde Park.
Those were the originals, when it was scanned, I think.
All right. Yeah, I don't see it was a big deal, it's just, it's, it's, because it's, it's-
No, the tenant is defined as Bright Days LLC, not the town of Hyde Park, and the, and the, right, right in the first, you know, the recitals goes, you know, you define as tenant, so who's tenant? And as you read through the document, when you get back to the top, tenant is Bright Days LLC, not the town of Hyde Park.
Yeah, that's a problem.
So.
Why don't you hold off on it, and I'll fix it before the next tenant?
Right. I mean, I have no problem with, obviously, this is perfectly fine, other than it's-
Should there be two?
Correct. So, yeah. So, I mean, now, it seems to me, now-
Energy requirements.
Right, are we voting, are we, are we, is there an expectation that, so, this is an addendum for the town of Hyde Park, is there going to be one for Bright Days, whoever that organization is, and whoever would sign for them?
Yeah, I'll switch them back, I don't know how, I don't know how it got switched.
Yeah, because, you know, we've got two copies, both that are signed by the town of Hyde Park, but when you look at who the tenant's defined as, it's defined as Bright Days LLC. So, it seems to be probably one document, or there should be a, a, a tenant landlord agreement for Bright Days and one for the town of Hyde Park.
Right.
Yeah, something got mixed up there.
Okay, do you want to, um-
We should just-
Put this on the next agenda?
Yeah, yeah, clean it up.
It's, it's-
Thank you, Kevin, for catching that.
I was, I was a little confusing. I'm, who, I started reading it, and then I get to the bottom, I'm like, why is Aileen signing it?
No, no.
Yeah. Most of us just went right past that, that first paragraph.
That's how they're balancing the town budget.
Yeah.
That's why there's seven members at the board, six of us committed.
Move to postpone till the next meeting, or to whenever you get it corrected?
Can we just table it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next meeting?
Uh, yeah, well, laying the table, really, by definition, is something that you're going to pick up and deal with later in the meeting.
Yeah.
That's true.
Postponing it takes it to the next meeting, so.
I, I move to remove it from the agenda.
There you go, second. That'll work.
Any discussion? All in favor?
And we'll see it-
Thank you very much.
Like you said, it's not a big deal, I'm sure they're a buy-buying, buying by these things anyway, so.
So, we're back to the next public participation. May I have a, a motion to enter public participation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, we're now in public participation. And Mr. Hughes, would you like to, all right, may I have a motion to close public participation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Close. That leads us to board subcommittee reports. Do we have any subcommittee reports? I don't think we do. We, the, the tech committee had to not meet because of Forrest's illness.
I did want to-
We did have a policy.
Yeah, we're still trying to catch up on our policy.
And we're still, yeah.
And our next one has to be changed.
I did want to follow up on that. That cancellation was unfortunate, we've got a lot of work to get done, so is there any, was there any discussion or possibility of rescheduling instead of simply canceling?
Works for me.
I talked with Forrest about it, and he's going to establish another date.
Okay, that'd be good.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
And the next tech meeting is scheduled for February tenth.
So, even-
It's two weeks from now.
Yeah, even, even if we, we meet that, and even if we have to schedule another one after that, I still think that we need the initial time.
Okay. Great.
We have some good one-to-one stuff.
So, thirteen point two, upcoming meetings, let me just get this thing. Upcoming meetings, Friday, January thirty-first, there is no school, superintendent's conference day. Wednesday, February sec, uh, fifth, facility steering, steering forum here at the district office at five. Thursday, February thirteenth, K-12 early release, superintendent's conference day. Thursday, February thirteenth is also a Board of Education meeting at seven o'clock here in the administration office. And from Friday on Valentine Day, February fourteenth through the seventeenth, there's no school.
Yeah.
There's also a special ed subcommittee meeting on Monday-
Monday.
At nine-thirty.
All right, thank you.
And, and there's a district leadership team meeting on January thirtieth here at six o'clock. And just to reiterate, we added a board meeting for next Wednesday, which is-
Twenty-ninth.
The twenty-ninth at five o'clock on heating.
Right here.
Yeah.
Okay, there's no need for an executive session. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.